Grace.
Okay, so just live over there for easier. I think they wanted the old chair. Standing over there one day and I was like, oh, perfect. I had made me a hamburger on some levity bread. There's a four I could taste the vegetables in the hamburger. And my normal bread on there.
Was it good?
It was fine. Oh, I had my lettuce, tomato and people, you know, the butter people. On top of it, a levy bread, a little bean core. On one side of there, my kind of makes on the other. It was good, girl. I could taste that sandwich. All this butter. You know, people trying to cut down on starch, so. We want to stand for the flag of this. Athletic legions to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we take oral coffee? Anyone else?
Councilwoman Valeria, Ree, Jackson, Waller.
Here.
Lanuel, Williamson, and Mayor Snyder.
Here. So go ahead and open this up for our discussion item of the evening. For minority advisory committee, Councilwoman Waller, you want to take a note?
Sure, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm just asking us to take a few notes and to let me give them away before we have a discussion. Cullen, take some notes on some things that can be done or that can be done according to our laws. So. I'd like to first start off by saying tough conversations are happening every day. And today will be the start of a meeting for the city of Alvin. I'm asking the mayor, Alvin city members, city council members, and its entities to be open-minded as the data that I, Mycilla Lawler, has collected may be helpful to some and education for others. With hope that it will be educational to us as a city. So that we may take the high road, if not the low road. The information that I collected was very informative. And it brought to my attention that in so many ways, as businesses are struggling to be successful. I'm taking the time to thank the six business owners for allowing me to get up close and into their personal space to see how the city of Alvin could hopefully help them. A quick reminder to my fellow council members. We are the ones who set policies and procedures. With the help of our city attorney, Robert's Rules, Code of Ethics, city charter, parliamentary procedures, council rules, and of course, MML is always there to help us along the way. During the next few minutes, I, Councilwoman Waller, will share with you and those that are watching or attending the study session, what I have gathered in the last couple of weeks. My first step in my mind was to research, research the web and see what other states are going for minority business, businesses such as Ohio and Illinois, as well as our own, Richard Whitmore, who is the governor for the state of Michigan. The program that I saw was not really the target I was searching for. So I decided to go a little, a little more specific, which was Black Business Advisory Committee. With that in mind, I reached out to other council members that I met at MML training and see what they have done for black business owners and how should this advisory committee look? One from the, the city of Flint, Michigan, and another that now presently lives in North Carolina and has stated, started his own business, both being black and no longer serving as council members. It was expressed to me that it should include a chairperson, a vice chair, secretary, and treasurer. People that will be equipped and educated. Help overcome challenges. Be able to make recommendations to the city council so that the necessary policies and procedures can be put in place. How often and where the advisory committee should be. At least two black business owners, a banker, a grant writer, a member of the EDC for technical support in case misinformation is given or the chair needs assistance in how the meeting should be conducted. Example, Robert's Rules of War. Alvin's own EDC director to see what resources are available to meet business owners' goals. A member from the land bank to keep the committee updated on available property. With all of these key players, there is no limit to Alvin having a black-owned grocery store, a black-owned bank, black-owned clothing store, black-owned computer repair service, black-owned restaurant, black-owned nail shop, black-owned barber shop slash beauty salons, and soon creating a black Wall Street. My next step was to get out and talk to black business owners. The first question I asked business, business owners was, what are some of the things that you have struggled with and/or are currently struggling with? Commercial space. Current commercial space owners, prices are high, are too high. A person can relocate to a bigger city with reasonable renting, better location, and attract more customers so that the business owner can see a clear and proper. But we don't want to leave Alvin. It is our home. We were born and raised here. Relate information to the black community. The business information is not reaching out to blacks. Going to banks, they pull your credit, and I know my credit is not good. Also, some grants will pull your credit. SBA slash PPP loans. Bankers should have seminars on how to fill out a successful SBA PPP loan and help get credit in order. In order to get your credit in order, you have to possibly spare money that you were saving to open slash continue to maintain your business. The information on these types of applications may be accurate, but if you don't fill them out right, you could get behind. Share space. Splitting, splitting the rent slash utilities will be easier on a business owner. This could possibly make drawing people to your business better because you will have funds to market your business properly. Start up money more lenient. Work with us on possible payment plans, like buying a car or a home. Monitor us with a medium amount, ten thousand, fifteen thousand. At least that's the start. Inspections. The first time an inspector comes out, they should tell us all at once what is wrong with our building instead of telling us piece by piece. Every time they come out, it's eighty-five dollars and make the expiration date on these application highlighted so that he can meet the deadline. Strikes against us. When you go to the city for help, they detour you from your plans. This is discouraging and puts us back in a box. Financial literacy. This is not offered in schools anymore, and neither is junior achievement. We should know about budgeting and how important budgeting slash credit is. Whites teach their kids about all of this at a young age so they are prepared for the future. Obtaining property in Alvin. The land bank and property known by the city, if you have an interest in it, they will tell you they have a potential buyer or potential developer. And we sit and wait to see for years, and the property is never developed. You call and talk to someone about a building or property. Talk to them one time and never hear from them again. They don't get back with you. Admitting that you don't understand. People don't admit this because they are afraid of rejection or looking dumb or stupid. City entities will hand you a stack of paperwork and expect you to know what the heck all this means. And you can tell they don't really want to sit down with you by their body language slash the tone of their voice. By doing this, it becomes a setup for failure. They don't make black businesses slash us a priority. And a lot of us just don't understand the process and it's frustrating. And when you are giving the information, it's not really clear. We are not asking for a handout. We're not going to work on our flaws. But we would like to be respected a lot more than what is given to us. Not enough passion to deal with us. Dynamics. The city entities don't see things from our perspective. They only see things from their perspective. My last step was to ask if they had tried the city's Dream Build Rights Program. The response was, not enough resources there. My clientele is not up. I attended, and I could tell in the first forty minutes that it was a bunch of alarm because they tell you information that you are already having. It's like stringing you along just so that they can say, hey, we're doing this if this is how many people are attending. They only looking for the numbers and follow-ups. Mycilla. I was the city asking you to bring back data. Can you ask them where is their data? Because no one has come and talked to me or any other black-owned business that I know of about what we need to get over the hump. How can they help us if they haven't come and talked to us so that we can be successful? I, Mycilla, could honestly not answer that question. I had to watch all, all these seminars. How do I have enough time to do that when I work an eight-hour job, maintain my business hours, and take care of my home? Project Rising Tide. We had a photo op of our former governor coming to, coming for a visit to see what the struggles was. A very exciting day for Alvin. Thanks to Garrett and Cheryl Mitchell, who allowed blacks to sit at the table and talk about how we struggle with our businesses and our homes and be able to get our voices heard only to realize it was not productive at all for us. Ms. Mayor and Council, I have collected and presented to you the data slash information from at least six black business owners. I would like to have a resolution drawn up and ready for approval with the help of our city attorney and myself. Thus said, we will create a black business advisory committee that will last more than two years with at least seven board members so that we can prepare for generations to come based on the information I have given you and with your agreed upon input as well. Thank you. So, um, when I went out to the business owners, it was really hard for me to believe I had this information because I felt like it was just hurtful to some, and they were really passionate about it. I did, um, come up with uh, who, what, when, where, how, and why. And I sat down with one of our council members and they kind of helped me go through these. Why do we need one? To address the racial wealth gap. Lack of high-gain jobs in our community, community. Supporting data and redlining, which I'll talk about later because I did gather some information of why, just so I have some resources and some backup about those things. Lack of transportation. Assist in a home, base business, base business and create wealth. And a lack of childcare. Who? Is benefits and aspiring entrepreneurs. What is needed? Commercial space for movement. Share space or co-op. Lineal lending practices. Extended risk periods. Financial literacy training. Assist with obtaining property. Resources, a contact person. And, um, we, we thought about how Ian does a lot of, of different things. And if someone, you know, was thinking about some property or a building downtown that maybe the land bank own, then he would maybe have some information or a contact number of how, you can get in touch with somebody to know about those properties. Mentorship. Helping entrepreneurs get over the hump. Also, learning about loans, grants, business plans, and networking. When I decided that, um, maybe this would take place. And I, I thought about maybe this, the beginning of the year to start filling boards because I know it's at the end of the year. We already spent with things that we gotta get done. So that's where that came from. Um, where? Alvin and the surrounding areas. Maybe we could service some surrounding areas in Alvin. Um, how? How will people be appointed? Appointed through law applicable, applicable applicants. Meaning that we'd like to see, um, all the applications. Instead of just one, maybe. Uh, exclude, um, property tax income for eligibility. And if that's not an option, um, can we allow payments? Because, because we know we are having a hard time filling boards. And those are some of the barriers of why people are not filling the board. So if we can exclude it, I would be asking that we can allow some type of payment plan or something like that. They talked about, um, the, uh, the inspection. If we could extend dates of inspection. They wanted to know why is there an expiration date? And can we get rid of the expiration date? And on these applications, um, can we do possibly a checklist for business owners to say, hey, you, you gotta have this, you gotta have that? Because one lady expressed to me that, um, when she had applied for, um, a permit, full of permit, um, it was, she was just told, you know, this was wrong. And then when she got that done, the inspector came out and he said, okay, well, this is wrong. So that was another eighty-five dollars. So if they could just do a whole checklist of what's wrong with the building and they can pull, um, you know, a permit at a time with this paper, they can pull, uh, pull a permit at a time and it will kind of help them, um, along the way. I did talk about, uh, barriers such as, um, redlining. And I did Google, um, uh, it to see if Alvin had, um, any participation in redlining. And I came, the first thing that came up was a fifty-two-page document from Alvin's own, um, Demetrius Goodell. He, um, is a scholar's work at Western Michigan University. And he talked about the black side of Alvin. So it was a very good, um, document. Hopefully, a lot of us can read it. I had started, but I didn't finish. I guess I didn't realize it was fifty-two pages. But, um, it has a lot of things that Alvin is going through and, um, a lot of people that he interviewed and talked about. But, um, so, um, the racial gap. Um, I also went and Googled racial gap. From the racial gap and financial literacy, because I found it on Investopedia. And that's where national data surveys reveal gaps among groups in the U.S. And I just wrote down a couple of notes, um, to help me identi- uh, identify, um, what the different cultures are struggling with. And it said that white and Asians fifteen years old have much higher liter- financial literacy rates than blacks and Hispanics of the same age. The F I, F I N R A study reported that Asian and white Americans were able to correctly answer three point two out of six questions meant to assess his basic financial literacy. While Hispanic American, while Hispanic Americans answered two point six and blacks answered two point three. Both below the national average. Um, I asked myself, why does the racial gap exist? And it came, it came up to five different, um, five different financial education. And it said, uh, families can play a part. Our high school can play a part. College, employers, and military. And it says, studies of the National Survey data say that education and household income are the two biggest factors and predict whether someone has a high level of financial literacy. So I, I did that to, um, hopefully reach out to, um, our public schools to bring back some of the home economic things that we experienced that does no longer exist. You know, showing how to use a bank, a bank, uh, the book. Which we now use a card. But, um, you know, they need to learn how to write chips. Need to learn how to balance. And so I was hoping someone from, um, from the school would be here today. But, um, I am open for, for any suggestion, um, from our council. Um, I don't know how we integrate our public also to hear from them. So, um, the floor is open. I've presented all the information that I gathered and some facts.
It's Councilwoman Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank, thank you, Councilwoman Waller. Um, I definitely would like to say I, I do see a value in a, a black business advisory committee. Um, Alvin as a city is faced with a lot of financial walls. Um, but in those walls is a lot of opportunity. Um, it's harder to build or to bring new businesses here than to spark new creativity and invest in entrepreneurs. Um, I definitely want to back, um, Councilwoman Waller in this and offer my full support in, um, establishing this committee as well.
I do think that's a, a really good idea that she has. I know back when, uh, Peter Mitchell was here as, as, uh, Professor Salat. He had started working on something like that, a little committee that was trying to get people, African-Americans and other people of minority status that like to have businesses. Get them trained into how to fill out the paperwork, uh, how to apply for things, how to get their own credit. And, and the meeting that we went to that, uh, Pastor Holman McGee had, uh, was showing people. It was attached to Homestead Bank. And they were teaching, uh, started classes on how to for people to get their credit together, their credit together so that they would have the money to kind of do. I think this is a really good idea. I think it's a needed idea. We have a lot of young people in Alvin who are capable of doing a lot of, and of having a business. And I think it's time that we start doing some supporting of them rather than just allowing them to do the, do the best they can when with a little help they could do much better.
So Councilwoman Waller, when you were out talking to the business owners, did you get the sense that anyone would be interested in spearheading something like this, like, um, kind of paint an range to ensure that this is something that, you know, like from business owners to business owners, peer-to-peer type of stuff? Like a mentoring type of thing where they would work with any entrepreneurs who would want to come in and learn the ropes? Learn, like you're saying, learn how to fill out the paperwork correctly and make sure like all the keys are aligned and guys that, you know? Just, did you get a sense that anybody was willing to step up and kind of?
Um, I did. I, I got a sense that they were, they were, um, willing to, um, um, in, in, in her words, uh, each one reach one, you know? Reach back and pull somebody in. And I figured that having, um, the keyboard members, like a banker, maybe they could, you know, hold a seminar and stay with me. With this group, they could, they could possibly do, um, like you said, with help like Homestead was doing, um, at one point in time. Um, and we could have the land bank to keep us informed on what properties are available. And we could have our own EDC director to say, well, you know what? Here's some resources, um, for people and, um, you know, and, and a banker, like I said, a banker. Mentioned that already, but, um, these key people, they could possibly, yeah, get together and see, collect data, you know, bring it back to, um, us to see what policies we need to put in place. And, um, definitely have our own EDC director, you know, like I said, to see what resources are available. So I did get a sense that, um, they were willing to, um, each one reach one.
Kind of like I was saying, when you first approached us about this, um, you know, I said, I thought I saw something that Steve Jackson was doing. And, uh, and then with, um, the new mayor, we sat down to talk and I asked him what, what's that plan look like? And basically, everything that he laid out for me is everything that he used through Gold Dream Rocks. He said, the only difference is, is that we had black. He said, the only difference is is that we had black business owners. Kind of doing that, taking the reins to help other entrepreneurs kind of get things off the ground. Um seeing the curriculum that we do and the goal dream was the um. The pitch program that they do, everything was the exact same that we already have. The only difference is it was led by black owners. So I think if that's something that. You feel like would resonate more?
What I feel like is we can still keep our hill dream rise. But at the same time, with this um black business advisory committee, they can still go out and maybe um. Collect the data, come up with the ideas, and um it's more than just one, one or two programs. We did mention something else, but I think this um the black business advisory committee should stand by itself. And um then we have more options for business owners.
Yes, I also believe um there needs to be a targeted effort at. Addressing the. The difficulties that African American entrepreneurs face in. Um this country, not to exclude anyone else, but like I know, knowledge is power. And also if you direct efforts in a certain place. The shared data that will be obtained from it will be beneficial to all. Um like we were speaking about earlier, the wa- the wa- racial wealth gap. Has only widened in the last year, whereas we've noticed in communities of color. That people were displaced from jobs, out of work, waiting basically for the government. To address the issues and the needs of the people going into the pandemic that we're still dealing with. Um. If we were more co- more prepared as a community, as a country. Or as a whole to address the issues that um the African American community faces, then. The the wealth gap could have been addressed. More. More appropriately, I want to say, last year. Um a lot of wealth was gained last year. And the black community didn't participate in any of it. Any of it. Um so that's why this committee is needed, that's why it's necessary. Um so that we can be equitable partners, equitable stakeholders in. This community and the 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 community at large. Um entrepreneurship provides. A even playing field for uh creativity and wealth attainment. And that's what needs to happen, that's that that may solve some of the issues that we have here in town. Um transportation, child care. Jobs. That's why it was, it was very necessary that we don't take steps in creating this, this community. Thank you.
And we also talked about um blank letters. Um to help seek, um maybe if a a business owner. Um that has a specific need, um they can go out and research and say, hey, you know, here's a grant. Even fill it out, you know, maybe I'll help you sit down and we can fill it out together. Um. I did talk to a couple of people from um Jackson this weekend about their uh. Excellent Black Excellence Program, but um the couple that I spoke with, and it was only one couple. Um they expressed to me that it was about. People that already had money, people that were already stable. Um. And they were just trying to get started or they were trying to um. Maintain but still had struggles. Uh I'm not sure how the Dream Hill Rise um. Program goes, but I was told that it was like a competition, but the people that were actually. Um that didn't win this competition, uh they expressed to me it was like a shark tank type deal. Uh I'm not sure I'd be able to talk about that. Um but it was like um. People still need help, you know, maybe only one winner, but people still need help. So I think that this is um. This is well needed, you know, in case some, that particular person don't win the Dream Hill Rise. So, yeah, that's 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 some of the input that I can also gather. And like I said, I know some of this information may be hurtful, but I'm trying to uh make us to think that. Let it be educational to us. Um and and not. Not not just take it as in somebody just trying to degrade uh what's going on in Alvin, but help us be better. So that that's, that's how I'm I'm looking at it right now.
There's a lot of people who do not have a lot of education, but that does have a lot of. Planning, beginning, who who can do businesses, but because there's really nobody who does in a long time. I've 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 went to some meetings uh back. Well, it it it's been at least ten, ten years ago, uh where SBA had offered some things up in Lansing. And Lansing had had got different council people to come. Uh telling them about and helping them to do business because they have the mindset to do a business, but they don't have. A lot of times the the. The the things to back them, like how to do, who to go to to search for money, you know, because. Like they always say, there's money out there, just that no one will get it. And so they need to to have somebody that can help them with figuring out how to get it. How to fill out, like you said, fill out the applications and and all of that, but as far as having the idea. Of what to do, I've got a friend that that always wanted to write books. And and she she used to work with me in the school and she just loved reading books. She's now writing her own books. You know, but it takes time before she has the down money to do it with. And so. I I think a lot of uh getting the businesses started is not that the people don't know what. They want, but they don't know how to get it.
And I think this group will also um address some of the redlining and see if it will gain a little bit deeper to um. To try to um address the red line um and and the racial gap. So um. You know, maybe some things that um our entities don't don't um. Have enough time to do, this this group can go in and try to help address those concerns. So we we just have a little boost um for us to know um what's actually happening in and happening in Alvin. Because if we, like the lady told me, if you don't get out there and talk to the people, you know, you would never know what they struggle with, so. Do you have any comments, Mayor or City Manager? I've come in.
Hi, I, yes, I. Um, well. Just a couple. Just I guess as a point of clarification for council here when we talk about having a citizen committee. I I heard a combination of them going out and getting information. And then taking certain actions. I think it's important for the council to understand that. What a citizen committee does is they they study, they investigate, and they gather information. And they prepare recommendations for the council, and that's all they do. They don't have the authority or ability. To go and do things on behalf of the city or on behalf of the council, other than study, investigate, and make recommendations to the city. So that would be what any, any committee formed by the council, it would have that limitation. Um. Not to say that all the things that go on over weren't weren't good ideas, because they are. I just want you to understand that. The the function of the committee would have to be limited in that respect. Um. There was also a question about um qualification for membership of the um. Being in default for the city. Unfortunately, and this was an issue that came up years and years ago. Um being on a payment plan doesn't cure being in default for the city. So if you're, if you're behind, if you, if you owe past taxes or assessments, you're still in default, even if you're paying that, and that would preclude you from serving on. Uh the city board rate. So those are just the two, two things that jumped out at me as as we were going over that.
So is there something that I mentioned that um this word um. Would not be able to do because it sounded like I just um. Was saying just exactly what you were saying. So is this something that?
Well, I thought I heard things, you know, I can correct me if I'm wrong, because there was a lot of information there, but I thought I I heard at some point. Like people on the committee or the committee itself working with people to do this and to do that, which. You know, maybe down the road, there's some sort of way that the city could work in conjunction with other organizations to program it. But and and maybe people on the committee volunteer their own time, but I guess what I, what I just wanted to make clear is. It's not a function of a committee to take action itself. They only gather information. And make recommendations to council, so that council can take whatever action it deems necessary and that it legally can.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so with with that being said, how can we? How can we um assess what Mrs. Wall brought to the table? I I understand the committee would have to form as a committee. Now, does that mean that there would have to be a subsequent board as well, this had to be divided into multiple?
No, I guess what I'm saying is you could form a citizen committee and and say, we want you to examine. A, B, C, and D, the things that the Councilman Waller laid out. And then report back to council on what you found and what your recommendations are.
So like um I'm just going to use for an example, if we have a grant writer. Um on this board and he could, they collected all this data. Can the grant writer on his own, outside of this um committee. Probably offer his assistance or her assistance, or could this banker um outside of this committee? Um since he knows what the struggles are, can he outside of this committee say, hey, you know, um. This the drink about Ian is hosting blah, blah, blah.
Sure, whatever he does as a private citizen is is totally up to him. I just, I just wanted it, it, just everyone to be on the same page as, as. How our charter sets it out is committees gather information and make reports back to you as a council. So that you as a council can make informed decisions with the powers that you have. I just. I just didn't want there to be a blurred line as to what the a committee's authority actually is.
If anybody can write a grant, I mean, you know, if there's like a, if a grant writer that can own some of the grants, anybody can write a grant. So if we had somebody, like I was talking about, you have folks that. You know, would be interested in giving them time to serve on this committee, to kind of search out resources. To kind of take entrepreneurs under the wings, to kind of, you know, to make sure that it's going to be able to move forward. Because it's going to be like volunteer, so you know, like you were saying, you know. The people have a lot of things on their plate, you know, you're working full time, you're trying to get business off the ground, you have a home, kids figure out. So, but that's kind of what I got when I was talking to Mayor Mahoney was that. He had um the time to put forth, to work with people. Um to kind of help them get their businesses off the ground. And he said it took years. This isn't something that people are going to see results in months, it it's going to take years. Um.
Something is going to be had, like on this uh committee with kind of professional people.
Nope, he just said other business folks, other like-minded business folks. So it wasn't, because before he became, he was county. Commissioner, yeah. Um you know, he was, he was working at like the Boost Models and they actually had the Boost. That was already down the corner. Um so he, he was a business person himself and just wanted to help. Other community members, other, you know, minority business entrepreneurs kind of get off the ground, because like he was saying. They didn't necessarily felt comfortable doing the traditional route. They felt a little intimidated by that whole process, but if you had somebody. Working with them step by step, you know, basically the same type of curriculum like, like I said, the EDC has. Yeah, I got it from them, but she didn't need to see. It's, I just kind of tailored it to what our people wanted. So again, it's just kind of making it, and he said he had to break it down. He said, I really had to break it down into simple terms for both, because the verbiage that you may get. Is intimidating overwhelming, people just like, I don't understand, I'm shutting down that thing. He said, I broke it down. I broke it down for just a simple person to understand, and we went from there. Um so. Uh like I said, if you have folks that you know are going to be willing to put in the time to help, then definitely we can. You know, push this forward, get people on uh the committee to kind of help. And like I said, anybody can do the grants, anybody can seek, seek out money.
So are we able to, am I able to call the city director to the stand and tell us a little bit more about? The Dream Hill Rise and what you've got about um the presentation tonight?
Well, there's, there's not a microphone, so can everybody here be okay if I'm just sitting? All right. I'm working pretty bad today. For those behind me, I'm sorry for moving all around. Um so Dream Build Rise is not complete. Dream Build Rise is not all class, it's not one piece. It's several pieces. Um it's not designed for them to go through the curriculum, any of the curriculum. Especially the one we just launched this year, and it stand by itself. It's got to be a process that goes. Dream Build Rise is a target for twenty twenty-two for us to continue to build out. Um and that means, so we've got the curriculum rolling, but just to give you a, an idea. That curriculum, every time we put it on, is five thousand dollars, and that's a extremely discounted rate. It's normal rate, and we show somebody that that specializes in immigration and minority. For that same reason that the mayor just said, the the way they teach it, they teach it in in. A dummy down version, you know, the the book that you can cheat on, is that I'm looking at the teacher. And just read that little snatch, a snapshot. For me, I've always struggled hearing things and knowing it. I have to process it. So that same mentality is more Dream Build Rise. So typically, those classes are seventy thousand dollars. That's ridiculous. He has decided that he will do this for us, we're going through grants to get it, but it takes a lot of work and effort to write a grant. Um so education or curriculum is on its way. Technical assistance, we've always worked with SPD Cs. Small business development centers for the exact same reason that the mayor said, you can't expect everyone to go through that one door. So having, having that's an option for those that 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 excel in that. Absolutely, it's available. They are probably better suited to do it because they do that kind of stuff. All day, every day, where I'm, I'm hitting this in it. But I am doing technical assistance one-on-one with the DPR participants or others that come into our office. They don't want to go that path. Um but in the same token where I just said we we apply for grants and that's expensive. It's expensive for me to take my time to do one-on-one because it's taking me away from something else, and there's only so many hours in a week. So building out DVR is going to be a process, and we knew that we couldn't do it all in one year. Next year, we're going to work on more technical assistance, access to experts, so making sure we've got lawyers and accountants. And um marketing people that are willing to give Provo no time to our participants. With the hope that as that business gets successful, they go to a market rate and they're getting in on that relationship early. Um that takes time to set up. Um, that takes time to set up, uh, so then the last piece of that is really that funding. How do we get to funding for, for entrepreneurs? That's the hardest piece. Um, I heard a comment say that there's money out there, not a lot, hardly any. Right now, today, with the, the COVID and the um urban funds. It's the first time ever that some of these funds, assuming these grants are being offered, so there's more money available today than you'll ever see again. Um, but it, it's not easy to apply for, so again, I, I say. Dream Build Rise isn't, isn't a one-size-fits-all, never was intended to, we're, we're building it. And I encourage you to talk to some of the participants that have gone through it, um, and I'm happy to share, share a list. Uh, what I will say about your presentation is I do think this is a great idea. I think having ideas, especially as the city's going through comprehensive plan rewrite. Economic Development's going through the economic developments, you teach a plan rewrite. Those are things that if we identify entrepreneurship as a, as a priority, we need to have information on what, what would benefit our community. Having it, getting policy set, doesn't mean it can go into action, because there's the funding piece of that. So writing grants can be very expensive, I write, I write our own grants. Um, doesn't mean I'm always successful, rarely am I successful, but that's the nature of the beast. Um, but it takes time to write those, so, you know, I think having good, good information um. Turned into some policy and, and, and not even policy, but maybe uh prioritized objectives, what is most important? Because there's a lot of what I heard you talking about that's already happening, it's just, communication is probably the worst thing in this community. It's getting the word out so those, those seats are filled when those opportunities exist. But I know Homestead's done a number of financial literacy and, and homeownership literacy, literacy and credit repair and. All of those things, um, and all of those things are very, very important for entrepreneurship, so. I would say, um, you know, I'm willing to give some time towards it to help come up with recommendations, uh. But then there's gonna have to be a decision that how do we fund it, because each objective takes money. You know, unless it's technical assistance, if it fits into my already encompassing job position description, uh, which it does. That one's, you know, an easy fix, the other ones aren't, that all have to, we have to find. Partners and partners that will sometimes do it for free, sometimes won't, sometimes it's discounted, like I S M has given us a very good deal on their curriculum. Um, but it's identifying resources out there, and then. The timing of those resources is never very easy, you know, I found out about a grant today. That is due the end of February, so I've got good time to write it, but I won't find out if I'm funded until June. So now I'm already trying to think about how I'm gonna spend something in the fall, when I really need money for this next six months to keep D B R alive. And, and growing, so, um.
Is there anything um still with the project, Rising Tide, I really wish. Council member Linu was here today, but um hopefully she's watching and she can give us some feedback of the next um meeting, but. As far as project Rising Tide, did that go away, or um was anything done with it, because um like the young lady expressed to me. Um, and one of the guys, he was like, we didn't see anything, it didn't go anywhere, so.
But you're gonna get my truth here, it's probably not gonna be what you want to hear, um, and I might get in trouble for it, and I, but it's my truth. Project Rising Tide was a program under the prior leadership, so Governor Snyder, so when we transitioned to Governor Whitmer. Naturally, it's gonna dissipate, I think we wasted our opportunity there. We had an opportunity, but we chose so, if you remember correctly. We took all of our challenges, we kind of put them on a map, we didn't prioritize them. So then we tried to form committees around all those challenges, and we were spread too thin. It was a very short timeframe, because Governor Snyder was leaving office, you know, so we knew that transition was coming. Um, and there was some technical assistance funding that we could have gotten, if we could have as a community. Identified one or two of our top priorities and identified one or two per each priority. Objectives that could have helped, for instance, um. I don't know, workforce was one of them, so, you know, um. Doing some sort of a regional collaborative where we can bring different certification programs here. M E D C could have said, okay, we like that idea, we'll pay for a consultant. To help you put a regional collaborative together and kind of put the foundation in place. And that would have been very tangible, we could have seen that was done, in other communities, they did some great projects. They did some public placemaking and things that made sense for that community, um, this community, we just. We did a lot of talking, we did a lot of talking about the issues. But there was not enough. There was not enough consensus to say, okay, we can't target, I don't know, seven or whatever it was, the, all of the issues that we were looking at, and get anything done.
So is the R R C, um, is that something that um business owners could tap into, or?
So it's, it's completely different, you want to talk, Healy?
I can, can I add to that? I just kind of wanna echo what um Amy just said, having worked directly with Councilor Linu. Who was our P R T fellow at the time, he identified, I think it was like six or seven large, or challenges. Which I believe they all deserve uh attention and resources, with them being such a huge, they could have. Each individual um task that we identified or category could have benefited from its idea on its own, they all needed. A good amount of time and devotion to where I think we were spread thin, to where we. Missed out on the opportunities that were available through Project Rising Tide. However, now that we are in R R C certified community, we do have technical, technical assistance available to us through that program. Um, through the M E D C and other, in other state departments that we can take advantage of. Um, bringing with the new, um, our new director, um, of planning and zoning, we're, he is becoming familiar. Familiarized with that program so that we are able to better take advantage of those technical assistance. You're using a technical assistance through that program to get our comprehensive master plan updated this year. But, but there are different resources available that we can utilize, but it's, it is different, it is going to be a little bit different than the Project Rising Tide program.
So R R C is a certification that the city had to obtain. In order to have access to the state-held toolbox. So a building owner in the downtown that wants to do a massive redevelopment, that takes incentives. If we were not R R C certified, rumor is, and I haven't heard of anyone that, that did this. But rumor is, they would have turned us away, they would have said, no, you, you've gotta get your ducks in a row. R R C was all about making sure we had those plans in place, that we had them easily accessible on the net for developers and, and businesses, and we. We marketed, we branded our community, all those things that if you did get somebody interested in helping. They came in and it wasn't a one roadblock after another one, it was, oh, this, this community's gotta open arms and they want me to, to open a business here, or whatever it is. So it gives them access, it's just not direct access to their bank account.
So if this committee was um established, um, would, would you be willing to attend meetings to see what? Were gathered, or um, was we gonna talk about a road?
So, Nicole, I'm always willing, I'm, we've got two people in my office, um, but this is important, I prioritize entrepreneurship very high. I decided that we can't just rely on S P D C, we have to do something in-house, um. You know, I've got a list of things we're working on, some of those might nick, some of those might not, but I'm actively finding funding to do those things. So, um, yes, I'm willing to, to partake in it, I don't have a ton, a ton of time. Um, but hearing that, that feedback and, and understanding what's important to the council. And for the council to say, yeah, we have, we, we agree with this recommendation, or we think it should be this. And then that kind of being a priority, uh, our, our community priority for entrepreneurship. Helps me through my everyday job, when I'm trying to figure out, okay, Dream Build Rise needs access to capital, what's, what's important in the community, oh, they need seed capital, they need startup money. Alright, how am I gonna find startup money? And it would help me prioritize the, you know, hundred things on my list for Dream Build Rise that I, I gotta pick it up. To get it done, so it would be very beneficial to helping me plan on how to implement. Um, but I'm not a one-size-fits-all, it's gonna take the community, and I love the mayor's idea of making sure that there's businesses that are willing to help each other. You know, you always trust and, and, and respect somebody, and you're gonna take their, their. Feedback a whole lot better than you're gonna take from some strangers that are across the table from you. Um, doesn't mean that there's not a job for me, and you should still come and talk to me. Uh, because I might look at things slightly different, and you know, it's a good thing, or go talk to the bank and say. I know I can't get along, but talk to me about how I can fix my credit, so I can get along. They will sit down and go through that, and, and they're happy to do that, I know Scott's office was doing P P applications with, with companies. Um, he didn't get anything out of P P, so the business got it, he didn't get anything, so the bank got nothing, but they don't need it that time. And that's how we have to do it to get it done. There was one that two months ago, he had a workshop. Yeah, communication is more of a, in this community, you gotta find a better way to communicate. I appreciate, I apologize, I don't think I had an hour to make that.
But Councilor Miller, like I said, if we can get the, the verbiage in mind, so that. We can cast a fine column, so that we can create, um, you know, kind of like what you're looking for from this body. We can definitely move it forward, because, you know, I think everybody here is, is supportive of this, definitely. I don't think they're gonna find any objection from anybody seated here, um, we just wanna make sure that, you know, kind of what Colin was saying, we understand. What the role of this municipal committee would be, but I'm hoping that we can have the business owners that would love to be of us to help us out.
And I'll just add to that, it would be great if those business owners, we could form our own score here. I don't know if you're familiar with the, I don't know what that stands for, but it's the retired people that. They end up donating their time as counselors, so if you're a marketer, you donate to help businesses do marketing. It's not as used as much in, as much in this area, I don't think, as it has in some other areas, Detroit used to have a really active score. That was twenty years ago, so I don't know if it still is, but same idea, so they, those businesses could be on that committee. They can't do anything on that committee but make recommendations to council, but on, on the outside, they can still be. Deciding that they are gonna donate their time to other businesses. And, and, you know, and I would work with them to put on events that would help them get that message out, so there's lots of ways we can do it. We just gotta have the communication to, to know that that's important.
And the one person who I was thinking of was very on the E C board is Jerome Harvey, so I think he would be a great asset.
Hi, Councilwoman Jackson.
Mayor from Texas. So I have any other comments on this topic? You're already good with opening it up to you, Councilwoman. Uh, in my name, I'd like to stand and speak to the council. Just kindly state your name and your address.
Lane Ardo, nine oh six Hall Street. First of all. I'd like to commend you on the work job, the, the research you did, uh, you, you really invested in this, and, and this seemed like a passion of yours. And I'd just like to commend you on that.
Thank you.
Hold up. Oh, so, um, in regards to this, so, um, yeah, I mean, you won't get any, uh. I think this is a great idea, I mean, it, 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 it would be a little. Too complicated for me, but as far as upcoming young, uh, 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 black, black uh. Entrepreneur, if they would have time to go through this and go through the classes and stuff like that, uh. I was offered to go through a class, but it wouldn't benefit me at all, I mean. My wife and I, we had these, we even had these two mine car businesses, the, 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 uh. The catering and the restaurant services and the cleaning services since two thousand eight, so what I, this, so this, this approach. Is fine for the future, but I don't see how it would benefit any of us in the short term, especially with, with our age and the way we've been going on. And, 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 and so this wouldn't work for us, but it would definitely work for young entrepreneurs, you know, to get the education and. And, you know, how to fill out business plans and stuff like that, but like I said, when I was coming up, we all had. All the black entrepreneurs I knew, we just had mine car shops, a restaurant, a cleaners, a store, you know. And so none of this, none of this pertaining to us, and then even with the business my, my wife and I got. I would like, um, somebody could probably refer us to maybe a faster approach. You know, like, uh, can we, uh, can we mortgage our home to get twenty thousand dollars to get these, these businesses functioning? Small, you know, small amount of money, how can, you know, how can we shortcut this? And, and maybe get, and, and in a case like mine, maybe just get a man say, oh, well, uh, uh, uh. Why can't I put up the properties that I got in borrow twenty, thirty thousand dollars? I don't get it. But, but, but this is a great idea, it'd be beneficial for, uh, the entre, uh, the entrepreneurs just coming up, uh. You know, uh, got a lot of black entrepreneurs, I hope we, I wish we had more, but, you know, I think it's something. For the future of our, I mean, uh, it's gonna take forever, uh, you know, but we have to start somewhere, I think you've got some concrete issues that. That could be discussed, you know, and, uh, I think, uh, I think, uh, that this committee should be born. And also, while we're on the subject, to piggyback that, I also think that the, uh. That the Equity Board should be seated, because we're here, that piggyback. Somebody, I, I'd like to promote if somebody introduced a, a lot more minutes, because we don't have a lot to talk about in these years, we need minutes to get to the Lord here. Baby, yeah, we need to, somebody, uh, yeah, let's add a few, couple more minutes, you know, for real, I would, I would introduce more. But you went out on the ground there, could have picked that good job.
Uh, plenty of girls, plenty of hillside, um, I love what you, um, presented, I'm, I'm killing it, um. But, um, I'm like this young man said, uh, it wouldn't benefit no vision. Uh, we already been established, we've been downtown on Superior for, on Superior Street for three and a half years. We was established, only reason we shut down, we didn't close, we shut down because we transferred to the building we have now. Now, with, with saying all of that, when we shut down, we ended up buying the skating rink, which we ran into some private tax fraud. But at the same time, we registered this to the state, federal interstate, we are registered nonprofit. Uh, but what, what we are, our problem is, like I said before, uh, Black owned, uh, when Snyder came down. Uh, he said that he wanted to give the money to businesses that were hurting the most, and that's what he was saying, and I sat in on that board. But what happened was, the money was given to people that was already established, so it went against what he. Wanted that money to be given in the first place, then we were booted out of that conversation, we lost, uh, the money to go toward our building. So I feel like this, listening to what the lawyer and all the rest of them said, uh, the black owners still gonna have the same problem. Because, you know, with us, uh, like Kumo to Lopez, when he shut down, the fire happened to them, everybody rallied around, it was a beautiful thing. But black, we, black people, they need to do that with us too, it shouldn't be, we, we should, our problems should always be staggering from years and years down the line. Same way you rallied around a certain organization or business, you should rally around black people the same way. Black people do not get the same attention than white organization or any other minority organization, blacks always get the bad part in the short end of the stick. So I'm trying to tell y'all, we already established, and we struggle, we already established, and nobody, we been, uh. As you say, uh, black ball, uh, just because we was told that they didn't really want a bunch of us downtown and downtown area. But at the same time, to change that image and that look, we gonna have to change how we deal with, black businesses are already established. And if you can't deal with the black businesses already downtown and established, how can you deal with one that's trying to get downtown? So I kind of, it's like an insult to me to be downtown in an area with a building I own, with a nonprofit, I got and still can't get it running. Nobody won't rally around us because of some of that slandering, he say, she say. Nobody won't rally around us because of some of the facts, slandering, he say, she say, and won't even come down, sit down and look at our paperwork. But then you'd be feeling good to be able to slander our neighbors just helping us. Then we have certain people who are sitting on the board, I would like to say, that's, that should be better than this, going along with the slander. So help the people that's running already established then, because that way it'll open the doors of the one that's trying to get what he need to be. Now, do I want somebody to give me something? No. But I want them to give me the same opportunity that anybody else in this town gets. Thank you.
A little course, that's why I was hesitant. Sunny Brown, seven thirteen Ocho Drive, um. I think this is a great, great opportunity for, um, underrepresented voices to finally have a seat at the table to name and, um, bring forth barriers um, that they have identified for themselves. Um, I know a lot of times, we often think we know what people need and we never take the time to hear from the most impacted people. Um, so I think this advisory committee is awesome. I think it is, uh, much needed and, you know, sky's the limit. There's a lot of work that this, this committee could do as far as bringing recommendations to council, right? It can identify barriers, um, they could talk about, you know, needs, um. They can do whatever you charge them to bring you back, right? So the possibilities are endless and I'm gonna stop because my own voice is bothering me. Thank you.
Anyone else that can stand and speak?
I don't have a mask, can I come up where it's still speaks?
Let's clean that up.
Hi, I'm Tisha Perez, I live at six oh four Sycamore Street. Um, I do love the committee. Um, I have a couple of points because I know, uh, our people think that the committee that Marco was trying to start is pretty much like what Amy have started with the Dream Build Rise Program, but being an actual black minority woman with the business, um. And I've been a business for five years and I've been trying to do her program, but with me being working and owning business and having a home to manage, I can't always meet the interview expectations. And it's a program, so it's like really only for a short period of time. Us black entrepreneurs need more than just one time program. Uh, and then you have to apply for, you have to compete to even be in there, it's only so many spots. So a lot of people is not even eligible to get in there. So it's like now we waiting to be in this program, we need help right now, like they said. Um, so the program I think would be best if we can have, like she said, that it costs for them to have those people come down and teach it. Black people have to, I have seen where one person will go and take a class, they'll pay whatever the cost is to get that seminar and they'll come back and tell the rest of the people. So that's what we need. So they already did this program once. Have it as a recorded session so that you don't have to keep paying, keep finding money to have these people come and teach the classes already pre-recorded. And all you gotta do is get the people to come in whenever they have time and do virtual classes where, okay, um, I can come onto this website at my own pace, like we do it in school, and I can learn this stuff, rather than me having to be present when they want us to and we don't have time like that. Like, we just don't have time. Like, I work full-time at a, a business, I mean, at a, a job, but I have my own full-time business with the same amount of hours. And then you want me to do a program where I need the help, but that program is not beneficial to my time. So then you come around, well, we got this program, we doing this, but y'all not coming to it. Y'all don't know our schedules, I don't know our, our, our barriers. We, we can't be in this program. I, I had to leave my business to even come to this meeting. But it was important, so I came. So I do have more points, but I'm gonna talk to Marco about it because we need a committee that's gonna be for us, not for recognition. Like, we need help and there's ways that we can get funding, but we don't have to wait on grants. We could do our own fundraising here. They just raised eighteen thousand in three days. We can do that every year. We can have a committee where we have our, our, a, a program where people could donate to the entrepreneurs and we have a certain amount of entrepreneurs and we give that money to them every year. And that's how we gonna build up. But I'll talk to Marco more about the rest of our plans.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Okay, Garrett Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street. Um, a couple of things, I wanted to thank council for holding this session, um, and in particular, council member Lawler. Um, it's really important. I mean, when I reflect on, um, I guess, black economic empowerment and involvement in the community, I think Mr. Brewer is right. I mean, at a certain point, there were black dry cleaners, black, uh, grocery stores. Um, that was a commonplace thing and I think as the, 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 the community has been, being just, being industrialized, uh, we've lost a lot of that. And I think really at the core of it, there's an anxiety, um, in black, among black people in the community about as the tide is rising, will they be left behind, right? Cause they can see certain things happening, um, and it's like, well, how can I get in on that? How can I, um, you know, be an entrepreneur and grow my business? So I think that's really the core of that is how can we be inclusive in that? Um, I think in terms of who should be on it, I think it should be a mix of black business owners because they're, they're there and they're dealing with it. You know, Tisha or Justin Harper, they come to mind, Makara downtown, um, they come to mind. But I, I still think there's a role for, um, the economic development president, the manager, maybe a council member to sit on there. Um, and so maybe there can, you know, be a, a, um, convergence of experience and expertise to try to move, um, economic development forward for black people. And I guess the last things I'll say are more of a kind of a legal nature and I want, hopefully the council members will ask the attorney to clarify this. So the charter in two places talks about citizen advisory committees, right? So in, uh, section five point seven, it talks about citizen advisory boards. And in section eight point one five, it talks about citizen advisory commission, or, or committees. Um, the committees are time limited, it's like two years. Um, but at the boards, um, it doesn't seem to have, um, as stringent of like requirements on it. Cause I know under Mayor Atchison, there was a, an arts commission created and there was also, I wanna say a recreation commission created and the council basically gave them a charge of what to do. So I, 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 I wanna make sure that the attorney is giving the council all available options because it seems to me that when the arts commission and the recreation commission were, were created, the council had pretty much broad power to give them direction of what to do. Um, and then the last thing I would say about the being in default to the city, that is in the charter. Um, but the council with a, a two-thirds vote could put it before the voters to modify to allow payment plans. So I, so it, so just because it's not allowed doesn't mean that it can't change um, if the council's on board and the, and the voters are on board. So, um, thank you again, council for talking about this. Um, I appreciate it and I think it's, it's, um, really necessary for our community. Thank you.
Do you have anybody else? Alright, Mayor and Councilmember Douglas.
Yeah, Councilwoman Lawler. I just wanted to thank, um, the council for considering my recommendation. It was, like I said, it was really tough to, uh, as I was gathering this information and I'm just glad that we received it, um, a whole different way than what was expected of us. So I, I'm excited about that. Um, I just wanna thank the, the public for coming out and, um, just to be involved and see what's happening, um, with this advisory committee and giving us input from their perspective also. So, um, thank you, Corinne, for providing us, um, some rules and regulations that we gotta follow. And, um, just to thank our own MEDC lady for giving up at least a hour to us, um, what she could, um, to say a couple of things to us. So I appreciate it and thank you, Jill.
So just for purposes of clarification, since we're all here, there was a, a citizen that brought up a distinction between a committee and an advisory board. So just so you're aware, the charter, the duties for both of them are both advisory in nature. So whether you call it a committee or whether you call it an advisory board, they're established in different ways, but they basically have the same role. Yes, the duration can be longer for an advisory board, but they're both advisors. They just collect information and make recommendations to the city and then the city takes action. The second question, there was a, a question about sending, uh, a, a charter change to the, to the public about changing the default. You absolutely can't do that because there's a provision in the Home City Act that says a city does not have the power to give someone who is in default to the city an official position. So that is barred by state law, so no, you cannot change that by charter, this is a war.
Alright, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a?
The floor.
All the favor?
Aye.
We use turn instead of a few.